The legislation is a flag of the United States of America. Institute Republic, religious stance, one nation, under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Rocco Alderman, Dr. Jim Duh, he's president. Alderman, Kathy Bergman.
Yeah.
Alderman, Rosa Odenly.
Yeah.
The current president. So we have an agenda, approval of agenda. Do we have any motion?
Um, we, when you get down here to new business, we need to amend those bill numbers. I put it on there. Um, the first one should be bill number 1017 and the second should be bill number 1018.
I didn't want to do a amendment of the bill errors.
Yes.
So, there are nominations to make a motion for, to amend the bill numbers and error in errors on the agenda.
I make a motion to correct or amend the bill numbers. Uh, under section eight, new business, bill number 1019, which should be 1017.
Yes.
And bill number 1020, which should be 1018.
Yes.
Okay.
The motion made or second?
I'll second.
Motion made second by Alderman, Rosa Odenly, on favor. Any opposed? Just sent agenda for amendment, then motion is passed on that. Bill will pass through. Alright. An answer from the previous meeting, if you want to go back, if you haven't yet, see if you need anything changed or added.
Were, uh, were you to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta have myself a motion approved agenda, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second, on favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, agenda is approved.
Then I would make a motion to approve it.
Consent agenda. Yeah, motion made. Second?
I'll second.
Motion made second by Alderman, Rosa Odenly. On favor.
Alright.
Any opposed? Alright. Ayes have it. Alright, section five. So, we just consent agenda, did we do the amendment from previous meeting, did you go through them yet?
Previous meeting, is that refers to the previous open meeting or the closed session?
Both.
Both.
That should be within your packet of the year. If you see anything, no.
And these notes from the closed board of all meetings for Thursday, October 23rd, they're written up here, which we have. Does this, does this get posted?
Posted, it's on. I don't think I still remember what this is about.
It could, we can look at that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think what it has to do with is about insurance, the insurance. It might be why I have it put in the computer, I might not. Yeah, I might, uh, but it shouldn't have been, we didn't, uh, have that, but I had this.
Sorry.
And it might be the way I have it put in the computer as well.
Okay, I just changed it, my bad, sorry. Did I discuss your desk, anything made, seems to work.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from previous meeting.
Second? Motion made and second Alderman, Dr. Jim Duh, on favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, approval of the minutes is passed. Alright. See the treasury report. Collector's report, bills repayment, and we'll see, clear if the pay increase appropriate expenses that they can do as allowed by budget. So you'll see your monthly budget reports and monthly, um, tre- the treasury report.
There's something missed with, Adam just pointed out, something missed with the part on your treasurer's report.
Yes.
And that potentially could be the way I put it in the computer because that amount is the insurance amount that we received. So it, it, it looks like an error on my part, it's just an adjustment in how it's in the computer.
Okay.
Because we haven't spent any money for the park, none.
So it's received, but it's in the whole thing on the computer.
Yes, so it kinda looks like a deficit, and that's the way it's programmed.
But I, I will double check that to make sure it's in the computer correctly.
Cool. Street, um, water damage. Sewer engine is up again.
Yeah.
I know it is, right here, it was, it is, here it was like the whole time.
What, uh, why?
Are elastic valves, sewer plants, three times the normal amount?
Because of the wiring was, uh.
The rake, the dragon, that motor, so hemorrhage, you know, from force, you know, there's that.
The rake in the, uh, in the tank.
The clarifier.
The clarifier, so. The clarifier, they're, they're rubbing the bottom and they're, and it's resisting.
Yes.
So it's using more electricity to drive it forward.
Yeah. It's got pressure.
And we have a solution, so.
We, we do have a solution and I'm just waiting on, well, one theme, that's one of the FEMA projects, is that plant put it back in kind, repair it, to get it, you know? So that's already been submitted to them for vendor vendors, you're handling that one, once it was provided, the stream and everything, so. That came out to be $360,000, that's the whole plant, I think we went through that a while back, so. I'm just waiting on the PMG to let me know up there, hey, and then they can start on it and send invoices to them. And then they'll just start there or whatnot.
So, does that, uh, on that clarifier, will that need to be broken down entirely and rebuilt, or?
Yeah, that's the whole thing.
Okay.
And then structural wise, will I have to?
And you're saying, I'm sorry.
Oh, the crack in that clarifier.
Yeah.
That's, that's getting worse, so.
Okay. And then, uh, you said the reason for this 30% use of the budget was from direct, the electric bill for that?
Just brought it up my attention, when I compared last years and previous years, I mean, we've never used that much electric.
Um, I don't, I don't think it's just, well, um, we normally pay around, I would say around $720,000. And it's been running closer to $900,000.
Okay.
But the 30% of the budget, um, has more to do with Mary and Clint.
Yeah, that part is.
Repair, uh, repairing that unit, which we had to do.
Yes.
Right, okay.
So that's another chunk there.
So that was an unusual expense created by a repair.
Yes.
And replace for the pumps for the, is it pumps?
That's the whole list.
That whole station. Listings, because it got destroyed.
And what was, is it $12,000 or something?
Oh.
No, it was $46,000.
Oh, it did, and that pump valve destroyed everything, where it wired, I mean, they had to have a home there.
So we had a $46,000 expense.
Which is only in a half.
Right.
At this point.
Now, yeah. Well, we're, we're probably not supposed to, but that's the reality, so.
And our, since we're the only big half, but we have to pay the whole bill, so what's the plan, what's the?
Well, we do have it in the sewer, we're gonna raise our, um.
Yeah, they're just paying me out, so it's not a strain, I'm just, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, right, recoup that.
Is, is the hope, that, you know, that FEMA will be reimbursing.
That or through.
Through other grants, but, um, it's a fight.
Or the court system, has a signed contract, which, that's, you know, contract's a number.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
See sewer, and also.
So, I mean, that's a discussion that we've had, but for the public, we had a, uh, an absorbance repair, expense repair, that we feel should have been covered under contract, but wasn't, so we had to pay the bill, or we're paying the bill. And our hope is that we will recoup that loss expense, uh, and, uh, through legal action or otherwise, and that's pending.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. How we down, so?
On what? I mean, right now, we're, we're okay.
Through the public, Adam's up, feeling involved today. Sorry, no, but so, he's a little tongue-tongued, so.
Too quiet.
My ear is closed, I'm not trying to yell, there are not many here, but, so. Okay, can you hear the thing stuff? Yeah. One of them, that, man, just. So we got that.
We got that.
Do you guys have any other questions about the treasure report, that budget?
No, I don't.
No, I don't.
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Dr. Go ahead.
Surplus, are we still showing surplus in the?
And every count?
Wherever the, and all the.
How do you define surplus?
In the past, we never had surplus, and then all of a sudden, you guys were showing surplus.
Yes.
Where we were spending more, we were saving more than we were spending, which is a good thing, I made a thing, we never, never. We were always negative in the surplus, now we're showing positive, I want to see if it's steady or growing, or?
Um, so far, like, if you want to, is it a whole, like, purple wave in there? Yes, we did that already. Do we have a surplus amount? Yes, it's been steady for almost a year now. I mean, yes, we have a test in water, but we're trying to combat that with other things. But, if you're asking if we're the right currently, no. And we've been consistent with trying to do cost savings and other avenues, which have helped us tremendously, especially these grants that we hadn't had to pay out on. So, is that what you're?
Well, it's, uh, I was told by GoBay, so it might not be true, I don't know, that we reach a certain amount of surplus and USDA will make us lower the rates. Because we're getting more, more surplus than anticipated, evidently.
Well, currently, we are not getting more surplus than anticipated.
That would be based on your water sales and your actual rate water study, if that wouldn't occur anyways, due to your census is so low. Um, the only way out is this, uh, water grant I got, so see if there's a possibility to, then we will. If, if everybody goes right, the worst examples are good.
If everybody's holding their breath for it, so it's rates to go down, uh, it's kind of a fishy brand.
But if they're asking if everybody does, is in the black, yes, and we have, we have a fishing, it's not a huge cushion, but it's enough, I mean, we're getting by, I mean, for the first time, I think. This has been a decent year, I mean, last two years.
And you're, Frank, you're asking, you're asking about the water rates going down, or some other rates?
Well, the water and sewer rates would go down, we would be forced to lower them according to what I was told.
That'd be.
USDA is the funding agency, and they'd say, oh, you gotta lower your rates, you're making too much now. If it was like 20% or?
That's, that'd be the paying bond off, because if you would get surplus, once the bonds are paid down, you know, then you would have that surplus, because that was money borrowed from them. But we have paid off one bond series and opened another account to pay off the other one, we're working on that, so. It's just chipping away.
So, how many years we got left on change?
Depends on what goes through and what doesn't go through, I mean, there's some things coming up that's gonna.
Well, if nothing goes through, if everything stays the same, the USDA loans will be paid off in 2048.
Yeah. You won't have to worry about it on here, so.
If everything stays exactly like it is, that's where we're at.
But things can always change, you never know what they may, so. Alright, any other questions, anybody? For, did I answer your question, kind of?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Yeah, um, public forum, did anybody sign up to speed and records to the agenda?
Mm.
Okay, unfinished business. That Joker said FEMA disaster relief aid, 4872 proclamation bid for a complete project, uh, did you make that for now?
I, I did, I did that.
Okay.
There's a, an email from FEMA that's in the package.
The ones I saw, well, I received two PDFs, one was for, this is, the topic that we're talking about is repair of the roads.
Correct.
And one of them was, I found the number correctly, like, $560,000 or something like that. Then there was another estimate that I saw, it was like $340,000.
Yes, so it'd be the plant.
The plant.
Yeah, it's a little bit.
That's. And then was there an estimate provided by Jokers as well, separate? Or is it, I don't know.
They, I don't remember, brackets confused. Well, they wanted a spreadsheet, so I had a spreadsheet, I sent, you know, breakdown, I said to them, it should be, is it in there?
I didn't put anything.
Okay, so pretty much the breakdown in the spreadsheet, as of today, this was today, for the project. So, um. So I, what I did was asking if everything was approved and, and orders for Jokers, and this, that's what I got, this is my department homeland security FEMA point of contact. And I asked them, do we proceed, whatever, please proceed. They will send that back, because originally, the time ran out, the FEMA director decided to step down, so things changed real quick in a hurry this weekend, and I've been scrambling.
So this is legit, it's not like a prank call from someone in China saying, go ahead and proceed?
No, you, if you want to call them, have a, or I get a beer if you have to fly here, but I.
Okay.
And then Jennifer Waller, which is the supervisor over there, um, so, yeah. This is what FEMA's cost analysis was, just on like, the 365,000 on the roads, and fix and culverts and that, but that's not counting adjustments for field changes when you get in there like a single, it may be deeper than what you anticipated, or this may need to move. They just supply amendment, and that's why they went to the total amount with Jokers' bid, just up to that amount, not over, up to.
Okay, so for the public, we're talking about several repairs of Third Street from, from including a bridge all the way to Highway 61, is that correct?
So it's from the emergency evacuation ra- route, which showed up on the engineering letter saying it was never put up to 100-year club. So they're gonna elevate that, so, because that was originally what it was made for. And so, instead of sandbagging the hell out of it like they did last time, this is gonna be raised, and shore it up on both sides, and where water can flow through efficiently, and work our way through there. And then go down Third Street, Culvert, ditch, all that, that's what you do.
Completely, yeah.
Should be in there.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, we're on the air, so I know to, so the public will know. And then how high are they raising the road level?
Uh, they're gonna have to do a laser, and then go by, you know, the flood on your, in five, I think, 500-year flood plane. It's not gonna be like huge, it's been, we're close, but it's not.
It's gonna be like two feet, or?
It possibly two feet, you know, but that's in the low spots, so maybe higher when you shoot grade.
Okay.
And when they adjust, you know, your pitches and your ditch and everything, everything can change, you know, with mitigation. So, that's the main problem with this, because you won't know till you get in there. And then with that semi going off, we measured it, and you couldn't get a truck or a car, you know, me and Jokers tried to pass each other going towards your shop, and we backed each other, I mean.
Semi going off.
Yeah, I ran off, and crushed this one side of the.
Where?
Bridge.
Bridge, sure.
Yeah.
When?
Um, so I pulled them out. It just, oh, it's just broke, so.
It wasn't like a tractor, or?
No.
It was at the cemetery road, whoever goes through with a big combine or tractor has clipped the fence, the sign, stop sign there.
Uh, I don't, yeah, that would be.
One of the farmers.
Yeah, back there.
Okay.
So, and then Mulberry Street, Third Street right here, Razor Roadway, see where it says how many feet, everything's approved. This is what he needs, they want to know after they get the numbers. You know, like, how tall, how many feet did you, uh, it's like homework for them.
So, this is that, the height, is that stated? Stated here, or is it just?
No, that is as in there, when they do their late, when they do their grade and lasering, they put that in there.
So we're gonna follow up designation and the specs, et cetera, after we approve this?
Yeah, well, the specs are approved, this is what they're approved based off, no size, no, no measurements.
Okay.
This would be an amendment for reconsideration of changing based on change in the road and variance of mitigation purposes.
Sure, and will that get resolved between Jokers and FEMA?
And then.
And us?
And us, it's me and Jokers, and mostly Jokers and Jennifer, and, eh, Mr. Abel. He would, but also you have Hank Belker, so what happens, the money, this money goes to the state, state issues and checking. So, that's, there's a disaster relief on, it's been holding that under the, is it Build America, if you?
Yeah, it's a.
Some Build, Build America are making.
The point is to buy all American, all your supplies are, are needed.
And during the courses project, are we gonna have weekly or whatever Zoom meetings, or physical meetings?
We do have, if you want to, we can have with them and Jokers, depending on them, because, because the FEMA furlough, I mean, they're down to just FEMA, the DHS employees now, they don't have the people that work coming here every week, they're not, they're out of the job, unfortunately.
Do council members have any questions, or?
Just what's been happening, they just think, I mean, what is, like, down, where's the city women's, I mean, um, do they, does that mean they need more information, or what's up?
That means FEMA wants, because, see, when they put it in the computer, this is just a basic estimate, you know, it's just an estimate. So if you put two feet, this number's gonna change, so then they submit it for amendment, amendment for reconciliation and reconsideration under that. Because you really don't know, just like the single did, we don't have the definition, how round it is, we don't know until we get into it, and that's gonna have to be an amendment.
Right, I just meant down here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the way they had on their invoice, which is spreadsheet, which is originally what they wanted, so, but they wanna know what they're gonna do, more details, it'd be like gave me a two-by-four, and this much tons, however, how many trucks, when it says please explain, it's, uh, it's just ditching. This is the whole town, ditching the whole town, putting the brush in.
So, sounds, it sounds great, I do have a question, like, I know that a few years ago, on Highway 51, driving in Carpentville, they re-modernized the roads there, just south of town.
Mm-hmm.
From between the end and Carpentville. And there were businesses along the road where, you know, they had kind of like weird turnarounds to get to, to, like, a whole health food store, or whatever it was, and some gym, physical therapy places. And then as the project progressed, uh, they were completely cut off, I mean, I'm sure there was a way to get to them, but I remember driving there and thinking, as a business owner, man, I would not want to be that business owner, you know? Because your business is gonna go, boom, plummet there. So we don't really have, we have some smaller businesses along the road here that we have to consider, but they, I'm presuming that since Third will be blocked off, they'll have access off Highway 61 to get into their places, like, there's, for example, I don't know why is a business not business with his tires or car thing or whatever, but, uh, the, he expressed concern over the barricades and stuff to me and probably to other, other members as well.
I also got a permit and a 40-foot culvert, so.
Excellent.
So if he doesn't take that shape, that fair shape from one of our 40-inch culverts, and a Moda permit, he's on his own, because it takes an act of God from Moda to get him up here.
Okay, so.
I mean, that's, that way you can pull off 61 and pull mid 61, I mean, because I don't see an issue with it.
Yeah.
I really don't.
No, that's good.
I sent you schematics, didn't I, did I send them to you?
I saved everything that you sent me today.
Yeah, they actually did a aerial with schematics, and there they were, so.
Okay.
So.
Um, so what we do need, since, um, the bidding process for a contractor to do this work is closed, FEMA has approved Jokers Incorporated to do this work, will need a motion saying, but.
There may be concerns with single at this point. They need to tear that up and do that.
But I, I guess that a motion is to accept this FEMA DR 4872 and Jokers Incorporated as the contractor to perform.
I'm only a motion to, uh, accept the joint Jokers FEMA DR 4872 bid proposal for a complete project. And, so make that motion, and, uh, and then, just to make a quick statement in that regard, is we've done our due diligence for this, had the site analyzed, and we have funded approved from, uh, on a state entire level, I guess, to accomplish this, so, uh, it's very doable and a benefit for the community. So the motion, back to the motion again.
She does the motion. Give it a second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. And then, like I said, if you can contact, keep this paper, get there, you know, all that, just keep, it's confidential, so this is department homeland security, but your last, like, four members, you are more than happy to contact. I can't pronounce this, I just call maybe, but, so, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, other than that, um, the park is already finished for the crew, although, um, that's got money waiting to be utilized as well. They're finished, the plant, they're finishing up on that, so there's like these targets right there, so. And once I get updated stuff from here, I'll give you two days. Because I was under, I mean, this is.
No, this is, uh.
A whole weekend, a nightmare, and then.
But something that's needed to be, even part of your station said, complained about the bridge, the road, the, uh, the state of Third Street, the fact that during floods. the, uh, the state of Third Street, the fact that, uh, during floods, Third Street had to be used 'cause sixty-one was closed and what a strain that put on the street and break down the road, uh, further, including the drainage, uh, and hills, not hills, but ditches and culvers associated with it. So it's long overdue and I'm grateful that we're human and grateful to our government for helping us do it, so.
All right, so that motion passed. Uh, the truck parking club, uh.
I put some, I looked it up, the Truck Parking Club, I'm gonna talk to you about that before. And I just went on the internet and turned it out what was available to me, um.
From that?
From that.
And that's what you gave us?
Yes.
This, this is the logistics one? Logistics plus or?
It should say.
Oh, it's a case study for Truck Parking Club.
Yes.
So for us, it doesn't involve any, uh, expense other than the, all of those, uh, we got plot sixty-one and we plot that area a little bit where, uh, there's ground weather so that it's open. Yeah, as an emergency thing and sometimes we have automobile breakdowns, uh, or accidents that are processed at that area to get them off the road. So this seemed like we've discussed this, uh, probably two to three times already. And it seems like a win-win for, uh, the city to help, uh, create some passive income, uh, to, uh, keep us, uh, solvent.
Uh, the split, they did the split seventy-third, so we get.
It's part of that case study. They provide the insurance, the split is seventy-third.
So to clarify, there's a, uh, a gravel lot just on the other side of Highway sixty-one, almost directly across from us, and, uh, this involves, uh, having a company stage or park. Uh, there are trailers there, does, probably won't hold too many of them, but, uh, there are trucks parked there fairly regularly anyway. So, uh, it's an opportunity to benefit from that, to establish that as a, uh, a spot that people, uh, would utilize and, uh, make our city, uh, a little bit more well-known and to, uh, to help, uh, raise income.
It's like a B and B, okay, plus, I mean, it can be for an hour, it can be a couple hours, thirty-four, is it thirty-four hours, Kathy shut down? Did they shut down for twelve hours? But like Baters will get some business from, for food, you know, they'll stop there, but then they get that.
Baters, I just, I didn't mean to interject, but it will find out. I mean, we have Baters there, so, I don't know if you've all noticed, but, uh, I mean, it's a privately owned business. It's no business of mine or the city's other than we get tax income from it, but they're not open as much as they used to be. So here's an opportunity for them to be open a little bit more, and if they develop this more, they can put in a shower or something there, so whoever parks there can get up in the morning, they use it to serve breakfast at Baters. They can go in and have bacon and eggs and coffee and grab a shower, just like a truck stop, only it's a mom-paw style, you know. Just a few trucks instead of a whole lot or something, so.
Yeah.
So that's the, the layout.
And the ones on there, you don't wanna go there. I went over there, it's just a broken apart and a lot of strip mall broke over there. That's a little.
So we could, you know, we could make it, if we get income out of this, then we can improve it a little bit more by getting those cement blocks and kind of, uh, lawn it off a little bit or do, you know, plant some daylilies there or something to kind of spruce it up a little bit, or more cyclist trees and, uh, you know, something that could be, you know, that's trucks, it could be more of an aesthetic thing that affects the city.
So, that's up to you guys. You guys can discuss whatever you wanna do on that one. So, it's a passive income. They do the advertising too and all the buffoonial complaints, all the twenty-four seven stuff.
All we do is collect money.
All we do is get money in, yeah, so.
Is it the same people parking there all the time or just random people?
There'll be people coming.
I mean, now.
Now, you have one that lives down by me that's all the time, but, you know, they work with companies and fleets too. There's one in Carpentale, I think, we looked at, and there was one volunteer knows it. Up in the city closer, yes, there's a bunch of them, like north of St. Louis, but there's nothing really, there's not one even here. Which is kinda crazy to name that, but.
I just didn't know, I mean, like a local, if there were, if it was used locally, a lot.
Oh, Illinois.
No, I need that, sorry.
They got Southern Illinois.
Yeah, they.
They got Southern Illinois, uh, uh, City One, you got Rowley Brothers, you got Billman, you got, uh, Remix.
They don't use it?
They're out of Illinois.
They don't park over here?
So there's, there's four trucks that actually park over there on a, on a basis, uh, in their, in their locals that parks there to take off the next day or whatever, or their home for a week or whatever, 'cause there's three of them that lives on the island over there. And then one that lives here that drives truck. And then there's another one that drives from Rowley Brothers. He might park there, but nine hundred and ten parks down at, uh, PQ's, uh, Long River. So anyways, uh, but yeah, I mean, it's a big thing to have. I mean, you know, the only thing is, is issue with the water is, you know, water's gonna be an issue getting over there. If we decide to quit showering, we'd have to do permit to board underneath sixty-one 'cause there's no water on that side no more at all.
No, I, I meant not us. I am not creating a.
Oh, there you go.
No, they have that, and I'm trying to give, they have just a rec, you know, and give them, don't wanna.
That's like the city's helping them a business to a little bit better, so they're providing.
It's kind of like, yeah, like, was it with a chamber, uh, city, they said a chamber of Congress up in there, that's, yeah. So, I mean, I just, I've watched different ones. It's, what do you think? Anybody have any objection? Please, anybody? Anybody?
No.
Or, I mean, we ain't investing nothing. That's just a hole over there and they do all the signage.
Is it like a year lease or something, a contract or?
They were ahead with the fleets and that.
I didn't, I mean, our own records.
No, no, it's as long as we want and so you can.
So we can terminate it at any time?
Yes, sir.
Then it's up to you.
So.
Who's the other person we pay?
Uh, Stripe, like we use here for a water bill. They pay on the app, like, you know, and it, I don't know, did the campground have that where they can check in or anything like that?
It's payable, you can pay.
It's kind of that and then it goes through Stripe and Stripe does the ACH into your account next day or a week or whatever you choose. It goes straight to your.
How do you keep, uh, track of it? Like, uh, do we have to?
They'll give you a lobby in there every day.
So you'll know, what if someone, I mean, we have a designated area, which is a business agreement that we have with them. But let's say someone else blows through and they're like, oh, there's a lot that's parked there, I'm gonna take up the space that is, uh.
Somebody called, they call and then they said somebody had helped move them. If they don't move themselves, they take care of that.
Okay. All right, so the insurance comes in, so.
They, uh.
So they have proprietary use of that lot.
Yes.
Until we say, yeah, your name, we especially.
Yeah.
All right, so I would make a motion, we proceed with the Truck Parking Club, would you?
One second.
Second, the motion may second. The Alderman Bergman in all favor. Aye. Was it, was it all I, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right. Any names? They just have it. And then I also researched it maybe, what's that camping club?
I think camping, um.
You know, the RV, the Eagle.
Sand, good sand.
Good sands, they may be merging with good sand. Is that good or bad? They might be absorbing good sand, I don't know.
Parking club?
Yeah, 'cause they're good so bad.
Oh.
So. I don't know if that's good or bad, so.
Sound good from the camping aspect of it, and I know they have very high expectations of good sand. That's how that works with a trucking company.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. They're, they've been buying like the other little platforms, that's why they're putting up.
They just can keep it separate.
Yeah, they're revitalizing that area, that's the whole point of it, I think, you know. Um, all right, we got that, uh, number seven, subseccency, payment to Omni Bill. What's this?
That's what we saw, though Omni Bill has a police software.
Okay.
And that's the lease account does not have the funds to pay that.
The term here, that's definitely not.
It's there. And there is a contract, I think that I attached.
There's a contract with it? Holy cow, I never had this, uh, in the city. Georgia, Illinois, Missouri. This is how you got it.
Um, I, that.
Who signed this?
I'm sure they did.
It's, um. Was there?
Well.
Passage of this?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I think the, the cost of it was twenty-four thousand and the discounted rate was sixty-four, sixty-nine is the way it was made.
Yeah, that's just the estimate, so, yeah.
And this ten fifty-three thirty-seven is what is owed for, to finish the contract.
Eric Penn, nice to be chief of police in St. John. I think he still works there. Um, yeah. So, pretty much, this is sitting there and I'm making my own thing, and, right.
Well, I mean, the reason I'm asking for, um, additional approval is because it will have to come out with a general expense.
So this is, uh, an agreement the city reached in March of twenty-three, so it's, uh, two years old.
Right.
And, uh, it was police software, uh, that we, since they have a police department, self-care is gonna get to manage, uh, the operations of the police officer and, uh, to process, uh, people that were stopped, whatever it is, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. And it's a thirty-six month contract, is that right?
Uh, is it?
Three-year contract?
Mine was two when I was here, so it may extend, I don't know, they have different terms.
I thought I saw thirty, yeah, here.
Yeah, this is, this is months, it's thirty-six.
Three years, so it runs till, does it run to January the twenty-sixth?
How long, two?
Valid.
Valid through February ninth, twenty-twenty-two. And what's, okay.
Thirty-six.
Yeah, so it's gonna run three, four more, four or five more months, but we're not gonna be able to, you know, use it. And we approached them about, uh, explaining our circumstances, have we gone?
I have spoken to them about that and they are not.
At least had tough luck.
Yeah, they don't feel sorry for us.
Hmm, uh, see.
Did you, did you shout to him?
I, I have an email.
Okay.
That I, a girl, a billing.
Oh, yeah.
So we owe, does a thousand complete the balance of the agreement?
Yes.
I see.
It's the final payment.
What is the monthly average payment? About six hundred or something like that?
I believe so, yes.
Well, glad we won't have that expense anymore.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, that's just more money.
Well, I mean, it's a bill that we got stuck with.
This, this has all kinds of add-ons you don't even need. Like, why do you need three alcohol and a family course? All right.
Anything about now?
No. So the issue is, where do we get the money to pay for this? From what department? And, uh.
Add-on features are potentially out of our cushion, our savings.
Our non-taxpayer money savings, I just wanna clarify that.
Yes, non-taxpayer.
Money that was.
It was purple wave money.
And, yeah.
So we, when we, uh, to explain the finances of this, we had a lot of, uh, equipment that we weren't using. This is at the beginning of Mayor Rick's terms, so we cleared out, uh, in two purgings, uh, materials that were no longer useful to the city and we, uh, took the proceeds from that and put them in a reserve account and we also used them to purchase new equipment, which was the tractor, I believe.
Tractor, yeah.
And, uh, and so we still have some residual, uh, set aside from that and I guess we're gonna apply it here because it's a city expense. And, uh, as regardless of whether it's comparable or not, it's a legal obligation that we have to meet, so, yeah. So I would make a motion to, uh, complete, terminate our agreement with Omni Bill and pay them off. If the balance of a thousand fifty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents using, uh, money that we had in reserves for expenses to, uh, similar to this.
So, yeah, motion on four and second, but Alderman Bergman, all there. Aye, they both.
Oh, that's why you need to go reserve account.
Yep, I always have it. Oh, no, it's actually the spectrum two. Yeah, spectrum settlement. Uh, so, yeah, this is passed, so we'll just pay out of that cushion. Like I said, this was not tax money from any citizen, this was a cushion made for purposes that don't.
First, I want to just want to go to my next one, please.
All right, sorry. What we have here, new business?
No, uh, seven, the border rule in closed sessions for a new computer system.
Yes.
And, uh, we had to.
We talked about it.
Uh, yeah, we talked about it, it's gonna be about a thousand dollars, five, eleven hundred dollars, I think.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred. And, uh, the reason that, that needs to be done is our old system was antiquated, the Windows, this was Windows ten and now it's Windows eleven. And, uh, our old system would integrate well with that as well as serious concerns about security breaches. So, uh, so we need to upgrade, uh, computers and, uh, we did our due diligence on that. We had three or four companies that we looked into and Jessica did the research on. And then after giving us an estimate of like eleven hundred and fifty dollars or whatever it was, then we suggested that she do a couple more searches through Tiger Direct and Microson and some other place. And then she came back with, uh, the computer and installation, which is gonna cost about twelve hundred dollars.
Um, just so you know, a computer has not been purchased, um, I, in this investigation and HP, um, offers a business account and purchasing through vendors that have contract with HP. So we're using our tax exempt status and we're recognized as a business purchase, not just. So, um, I'm still working on that to get. So, um, I'm still working on that to get the best deal we can possibly get within our price range and get everything that we need, so we're kind of in the middle of that. So a computer has not been purchased.
Okay. But I would, I guess, make a motion to go ahead and purchase one, provided that it's in that price range, uh, and it sounds like from the research that we've done, that we'll be, but, anyway, I would make a motion to purchase, uh, a new computer system for us.
Alright, uh, we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, Alderman, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? No, I always have it, uh, that has passed. Do you have any individual, or all just?
But it's up to you.
It's up, I mean, is it what funds are here coming out of?
This one coming out in general, okay.
Okay, in the general, so I'm gonna do a, a secondary roll call. On this payment for a new city use, intellectual property computer. Dr. Alderman Zanduwa, you voted aye?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Alright. Alderman Kathy Bourbon?
Aye.
Alright, Alderman Rose Rosenway?
Aye.
Alright, for the record, they could show that that, that roll call vote had been passed, and no conflicts on this at all. Yes, ma'am. Um, so...
Yeah, you had said the closed session, um, discussing the computer, but I don't see where it falls in, and the reasons for closed session.
It, it wa, it was on the closed session agenda.
But there, there.
It says you can go for a higher fire, voting discipline.
There's more than that under closed session in this oncho.
And I, I talked to Adam last night, there's no, no exception for purchasing a computer under six, ten, oh, twenty-one.
Where are you getting?
He was saying because the, the computer contains personal information, that has nothing to do with the purchase. The purchase itself has to do with.
Find one that would handle our basic security perimeter.
And then. But that, you're not disclosing any personal information.
When we're talking about employees, we are.
Not in the decision, not in the decision and vote to purchase a computer.
We didn't, before, they just know.
Well, the, the discussion to purchase a computer, that is not proper to be in a closed session, because there's no personal information discussed. You know, you're not telling, you're not in that closed session doing social security numbers, disclosing social security numbers or other personal information. Buy, to go out and buy a computer must be done, and discussed, must be done in open session.
Which it was, which it was, well, it's.
Yeah, but you discussed it in the closed session, you just admitted that.
Wait, wait, I did, yeah, and you.
But that's not one of the things that can be discussed in a closed session.
So intellectual property of a city cannot be disclosed, by, and whom?
You, you did not discuss intellectual property.
That is intellectual property, it's the city's and all their banking information, how is it not intellectual property?
The fifth one's.
I'm trying to understand your thought.
You're, you're saying, Joey, that it's black and white, that the closed session should only be for personal.
No, there, there are twenty, twenty-five, I think, exceptions, twenty-five exceptions. There's not a manner to purchase a computer or to purchase.
We didn't vote on purchasing it.
Okay.
We wanted to show.
But you discussed needing to buy a computer, correct?
I did, yes.
Okay. What exception does that fall under?
For instance, then identify the configuration of components or the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network, and would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption of a computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network of a public governmental body. This exception shall not be used to limit or deny access otherwise public records in a file, document, data file, database containing public records, records related to the procurement of, of, or expenditures relating to such computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network, including the amount of money was paid by or on behalf of a public governmental body for such computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network shall be open.
Shall be open.
And that is open for interpretation, because it said that's under closed six ten, oh, twenty-two. So, could that be open for interpretation?
But you, you, you are, you, you're not discussing any, any personal information, intellectual property, anything like that.
We were discussing the computer system.
Okay.
And the lack of security that we have at this point.
Okay.
And security is an issue for closed session, I'll give you an example.
Access of unauthorized.
And I, I'm uncomfortable giving an example, but I'll give you an example. Let's say someone knows a computer system's compromised. You do that in open session, and it creates an opportunity for hacking, et cetera, because they know that the system's weak. So if you do it in a closed session, you're addressing that issue, it's a discussion about it.
But you think it's over the closed session, you just cause you want to, or you think that it need, needs to be in a closed session?
What's, what's stored on a computer? Employee records?
But you're not discussing any of this.
Security numbers. It's, it's an inherent element of the discussion.
Okay.
I'm just.
I, I, I'm, I'm.
I think that's open for interpretation, the, of each one, if you'd like to follow it, because, I mean, unauthorized access to an unlawful disruption of a computer, or a computer network by the municipality, that's right there, there's your closed session under twenty-two, so.
And then we don't.
I understand, but you're, you're nitpicking at what you want, not what it says, and law fully, the whole step. It's like statute, take and choose what you wanna do. You, I mean, it's open for interpretation on this, and I do see what you're saying, but unauthorized access is what I'm getting at. We have no firewall, there you go, everybody steal their shit because you're throwing fit, you know? But anyways, it's open for interpretation, so tell you what, tomorrow I'm gonna call Stuart Hayes, I'm gonna give him an email, I'll CC you and that, we're moving forward, I don't have it anymore.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
The purchase, in other words, in my understanding, you had to get several bids.
We, we got bid.
And the place in Perryville that we've done business with in the past, where we got the burner from? Or a computer connection, I can't remember.
That's who's gonna be transferring, they're in, the only, we got bid from them, that we did have done, but they can't do nothing with this one.
Okay.
And, and I don't know what's wrong about it, I've used them too, they're great people.
This computer is thirteen years old, and it will not allow Windows eleven to be downloaded, because Windows allow eleven requires a specific piece of hardware.
Memory.
And, well, and currently, banking, quick quotes, there, there's a lot of secure information that uses Windows eleven, and our computer system does not support that.
Okay.
Did, yeah, but what's the?
Well, I was just.
What?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You, you were getting bids, you got several bids, at least three. Can we see the comparison between the first, second, third bid, and why the one selected is the best?
One hasn't been selected.
Yeah, it's.
I thought they just said.
We approved to purchase one, but we have to find the correct bid and programming to be with, or state community bank, all the banking stuff. Like the check reader, we have a reader now, and stuff like that. Our systems are updated from nineteen forty to the twenty-first century now, so, I mean.
Technology evolving.
Yeah, you know how it is, and there's always updates, and your computer's always, you gotta have a firewall. So, I mean, we haven't made a decision on that, it's just agreeing to purchase one to replace that old one that's no longer no good. So, I mean, it's, it's just nine years old. My, I just sued, same thing with mine, you remember that, it crashed, so.
Skeet, come right up here.
Skeet, does anybody else have any questions? Okay, we move on, please. Okay. Bill number ten seventeen, as amended in the original, uh, the board. An ordinance calling for a general election in the city of St. Mary, Missouri, setting the date of election, officials to be elected, and the location of the election.
Oh, that's coming up.
Yeah.
You guys read people from the one.
What?
Oh, that's wrong, that's a typo, that should say Ward two.
Oh, which, which, I mean.
The, the bottom says Alderman Ward one, it should be Alderman Ward two, so there should be two for each, and I can fix that.
So, I'll just read it.
Okay.
Kind of quickly. Bill number ten seventeen, ordinance calling for a general election in the city of St. Mary, Missouri, setting the date of election, officials to be elected, and location of the election, be it ordained. Judge Board of Alderman of the city of St. Mary, Missouri is filed, section one, a general election shall be held in the city of St. Mary, Missouri, on Tuesday, April seventh, twenty-twenty-six, for the purposes of electing the following officials. Mayor for a two-year term, Alderman one for a two-year term, Alderman Ward one for a one-year term, Alderman Ward two for a two-year term, Alderman Ward one for a one-year term. Section two, all persons wishing to file for office may do so by filing with the city clerk during the filing period. The filing period shall begin on Tuesday, December ninth, twenty-twenty-five, at nine AM, and close on Tuesday, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, at five PM. Section three, all candidates must be citizens of the United States and inhabit in the city for one year. Those filed for Alderman must be resident of Ward from which he is elected, or she. Candidates must be in good standing with the city whereby all taxes and money due to the city must be paid in full prior to the date of filing. Section four, the polling place is City Hall, located at seven eighty-two Third Street, St. Mary, Missouri. Polls will be open at six AM and remain open until seven PM. Section five, the city clerk shall file a notice of the election in the local newspaper of general circulation prior to the filing date. Section six, the city clerk shall certify all candidates to the county clerk by Tuesday, January twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. Passed and approved this thirteenth day of November.
That needs to be changed.
To.
Be eighteen.
Eighteenth day of November, twenty-twenty-five. Mayor, uh, test, blah, blah, and then the votes, uh, yeah.
So you voted for, calling for a general election, so they were both.
So the filing date is December ninth through the thirty-first.
Yeah. Okay. So, on this, we'll do, uh, we'll do a normal reading.
Well, do you need to make a motion for me to correct this?
Yeah, um, we're gonna need to make, have a motion to amend. I'm gonna recommend an amendment to change the airs on Ward two, and also down there on the date.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, date and some of the typos, yeah. Uh, do you guys?
I would just do the motion to amend, so I can fix it.
Yeah, can you do motion amend, or else, if you guys want to do that, amend that to correct the date and airs?
Second.
Motion made, seven, vote is.
I'll make that motion, and then there's a second, I don't think, vote.
I'll see.
Alright, motion made, seven, all favor.
Alright.
Alright, and eight, alright. So amendment, pass, eyes down, it's passed. Next, uh, the rule.
Well, I mean, because we have to make a motion to put this into effect.
Oh, because of the time constraints, so, uh, I made the motion that we, uh, approve bill number ten seventeen with the corrections, typographic and otherwise, that we just mentioned, and, uh, and vote on it today, since December ninth, it's just a reminder.
Generalize, so we'll do generalize and roll call. So.
Document a motion.
Document a motion, is there a second? By heading only, ordinance calling for general election in the city of St. Mary, Missouri, setting the date of election, officials to be elected, and the patient of the election. Is there a second on this, by heading only?
A second.
Motion made, and second, and by Kathy Bourbon, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion passed, on the highs. Alright. Second reading, bill number ten seventeen, an ordinance calling for general election in the city of St. Mary, Missouri, setting the date of election, officials to be elected, and location of that election by heading only. Roll call vote, Alderman, Dr. Zanduwa?
Aye.
Alderman Kathy Bourbon?
Aye.
Alderman, Rose Rosenway?
Aye.
Alright. The highs have it, the motion is passed. Alright.
And that's one of the topics.
Alright.
The next one is, um...
Six, six, I guess I'll leave it out, in full, we didn't call.
Yeah, this one's kind of a, has a.
It's a lot.
It's a lot of, alright.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, everybody wants, ooh, this is a lot. But, uh, I mean, it'll be available in writing, but since.
I did put it out there for anyone that, both of them.
Yeah. I don't agree, and, uh, and I could probably do a brief.
They do summarize under the question of valid bond issue, if you want, by just heading only. You can't go into that, if you wanna do it, it is like sixteen thousand pages. And we can, we'll have public hearings, I'm gonna stay with Will to kinda explain it. Because our engineer will be up here, along with, yeah, to try to kinda break that down.
So in summary, this is an ordinance calling a bond election in the city of St. Mary, authorizing certain actions and connections therewith. This is a lot of money, I'd like to read at least the first part of it. That's alright.
Yeah.
Be it ordained by the Board of Alderman of the city of St. Mary, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the Board of Alderman of the city of St. Mary, Missouri, finds it necessary and hereby declares its intent to borrow up to seven million dollars for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, extending, equipping, furnishing, and improving the city's combined waterworks and sewers, sewage system, sewage system, the, called the project, uh, to evidence such following by the issuance of combined waterworks and sewage, is it sewerage or sewage?
It's sewerage.
It's being right from the lawyer's office.
It's a sewer, on the water, that's the, yeah, that's, yeah.
That's it, well. Uh, revenue bonds in the city amount of seven million dollars. Section two, a bond election is hereby ordered to be held in the city on Tuesday, April seventh, twenty-twenty-six, under the following question. Shall the city, the question is, shall the city of St. Mary, Missouri, issue combined waterworks and sewage system, revenue bonds in the amount of up to seven million dollars for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, extending, equipping, furnishing, and improving the city's combined waterworks and sewage system? The cost of operation and maintenance of said system, and the principle of and interest on said revenue bonds to be payable solely from the revenues derived by the city from the operation of this combined waterworks and sewage system, including all future extensions and improvements thereto? The authorization of the bonds will authorize the city to fix, establish, maintain, and collect rates and charges for the services provided by the city through its combined waterworks and sewage system, including all extensions and improvements thereto, hereafter constructed or acquired by the city, in addition to the other rates and charges for such services provided by law, as will produce income and revenues sufficient to provide funds to pay the costs of operation and maintenance of said combined waterworks and sewage system, and the principle of and interest on said bonds as they become due and to retire the same within thirty-five years of date thereof, and to provide the establishment of reasonable services therefor. Section three, the form of the notice of bond election for said election, a copy which is attached hereto and made part hereof, is hereby approved. Section four, the city clerk is hereby. is hereby approved. Section four, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to notify the county of St. Genevieve, County of Missouri, of the adoption of this ordinance nullified at five p.m. on January twenty-seven, twenty twenty six, and to include in said notification all the terms and provisions required by chapter one fifteen of the revised statutes of Missouri. Section five, the city expects to make expenditures on and after the date of adoption of this ordinance in connection with the project, and the city intends to reimburse itself for such expenditure with the proceeds of the bonds. The maximum principal amount of bonds expected to be issued for the project is seven million dollars. Section six, the mayor, city clerk, and other officers and representatives of the city are hereby authorized and directed, directed to take such other action as may be necessary to carry out the purpose and intent of this ordinance. Section seven, if any clause or paragraph, section, or other part or portion of this ordinance is held to be invalid, legal, illegal, or unconstitutional for any reason, the Board of Law, if anybody declares it, would nevertheless have enacted the remaining portions thereof, and such remaining portions shall remain in full force and effect. Section eight, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval passed by the Board of Law, when approved by the mayor of the state in November. So that's the ordinance.
You don't make that down there?
No, um, yes, I do, but let's, let me complete it first and then, uh, you can summarize. Notice of bond election. Notice is hereby given to the court of orders for the city of Saint Mary, Missouri, that the Board of Aldermen of the city has called a bond election to be held in the city on Tuesday, April seventh, twenty twenty six, commencing at six a.m. and closing at seven p.m. Under question, continued following: sample ballot, official ballot, bond election, city of Saint Mary. This is, uh, what I just, shall the city of Saint Mary issues combined waterworks and sewage system, revenue bonds in the amount of up to seven million dollars for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, extending, equipping, furnishing, and improving the city's combined waterworks and sewage system? The cost of operation and maintenance of said system, and the principle of and interest on said revenue bonds to be payable solely from the revenues derived by the city from the operation of this combined waterworks and sewage system, including all future extensions and improvements thereto? Yes or no? Instructions of the voters, if you're in favor, place an X in the box, et cetera. And, uh, last is a letter which we will give a copy of to Sue Walt, county clerk, uh, in County of St. Genevieve, uh, which is a notice of this vote that's coming up. So now, if you would summarize and explain.
I'm sure Frank knows how bonding works.
Yeah, I'm kind of confused on this because when we did before, we were told things and we, as a board, it turned out not to be true later, like we were told.
Oh, this is straight from the-
I know, we were told that-
You were told.
Because the well was gonna run dry and we had to switch, which isn't the truth because the well wasn't gonna run dry. And then the second was, you won't recharge new rates until the water system's hooked up.
Yes.
But then we, the board was forced to raise the rates because USDA said you're not, your numbers aren't coming up right. And my option would be to cut costs, not to raise rates, but raise rates.
This is-
Frank, when, when did the, I'm, I'm ignorant. When did that go down? When did-
Um, two thousand eight.
Yeah, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, yeah.
Eight, nine.
Two thousand eight, nine.
And it's just that we were told things that weren't true, but we were preaching them at the hearings, like this is, this is really true, you know, we believed it.
So we is who? When you say we were told, who is we?
The board versus what the clerk and the mayor had stated.
Okay, thank you. So there's disparity between the mayor and clerk and the board in terms of information?
Right, back then. Now, um, my other question would be, if we're putting this on the ballot and we're getting a hundred percent reimbursement on it, it's not costing us anything, then why are we having to pay money to them out of our revenue?
It's a, so I see what you're saying. We're, the city's not borrowing seven million dollars. It's just there if we need it, okay? Passing this bond issue doesn't take out any debt to the city. It don't, it simply authorizes us to potentially take out debt in the future if need be to, for specific, only for water and sewer improvements, to fix this mess we have now, right? It's all, it's confusing. And Michael will be here, we'll have public hearings over it because, you know, legalities. I mean, the confusing part of these funding agencies, they want to see community that has borrowing authority to cover all, you know how that works, for the full project amount before the board grants, but they also use to confirm, most cities are receiving assistance already, grants for, at this point in time, they're anticipating we'll have over fifty percent of what we're funded by grants, because anything that's not a loan is grant. We're not, we're not paying into it. So even if this passes, the city will have every opportunity to review with the citizens, all the verbatim, all that stuff before it's even, because you guys openly have the choice not to move forward or whatever, so does the board.
You guys, the citizens.
Yes, the citizens. So, I mean, it's a grant loan mix. So, but we got some upcoming things that this don't happen. But you don't want to set your amount of bonding too low and then your project's like, oh crap, you know? And then something bad happens and, well, you're underwater, literally.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so this has been done before, right? You guys did it, uh, two, fifteen years ago, seventeen years ago. So when that occurred, uh, and what, it's not paid off, because you asked a question earlier.
Right.
It'll be paid off. So do you, how did the two mesh? Do you pay gold or one to the other, or?
I'm working on that with Michael, our engineer right now. See the other debt bond we have? I'm trying to see if possibly, with the permission of USDA, if they will let us absorb that.
All of our debts are rolled over to one.
Yeah, I'm trying to get that to this so I can get the interest rate down to one point two. What we're paying now is higher. What this is offering is one point two if we roll it over. So, I mean, and that's all in all. And once, if everything goes out the end, and we, and we also have to be self-sufficient. So that contract with St. Genevieve, we, thank you for helping us and all that, and Wes and all them up there. But, you know, if we have a chance to go out on our own and expand, that lead expansion will help her live in other towns, too. So, I mean, that's there if we need it, if that's all it is. It's just a backup, but chances are, we're not gonna need that. But I'm trying to see if we can assume that bad debt that's been sitting there forever and put it at a lower interest rate and consume it and still progress. And Michael, the engineer, and the lawyers are looking into that.
Question.
Yeah.
You referenced it as a bad debt. Why is it a bad debt?
Well, it was a bad debt. It's good debt now.
I mean-
Bad debt means, I mean, it wasn't being paid for three years.
Oh, the bonds weren't being paid for three years?
Yes, no, they were not. We were not compliant to deal with that.
Really?
Yeah. When we had the first purplish, thirty-six thousand went into it to cover it.
Oh.
So.
Oh.
They were just paying interest and then not paying the other bond partner.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's not good.
No, because we were not compliant. If you look at the actual before, the year before I took office, we were not compliant with state statute, paying the bond as it agreed, and they were about to rip the court.
So, if, well, one thing I have a question about is, why are we passing this as an ordinance when it seems like there's a lot of questions connected with it? And what, and in passing it as an ordinance, what are we accomplishing in that regard?
You're passing it to put it on the ballot. Just, just about.
The reason we're doing this is to get it on the ballot.
Yes.
And then when it's on the ballot, we're gonna yes or no.
Yes.
If we get a yes, then we're gonna be discussing how to do all this stuff.
Well, between January, between January and April, well, there'll be town hall meetings that will include heartland engineering. So there'll be explanation to the public as to, um, what all of this means. So, um, I'm sure there'll be more than one town hall meeting-
Yeah.
-to, um, to explain the details.
So fuck everybody down off the roof.
Right.
We are not voting, no.
We are not.
We're not taking a million dollars, we're not, we're not, we're just putting an amendment or a-
A bond issue on the ballot.
That is, that is.
And in the meantime, between now and doing that, smart people would do their homework and get everybody together to really figure out what this all means, and then we go forward from there. And if it's gonna be yes, then we're gonna be fixing our sort of waters as soon. If it's gonna be a no, we're gonna be waiting for the panels to fly off the, the-
Yes, and, and this also gets us self-sufficient on our own, too, water and sewer. So that's which is nice. And I hope we can combine the other bonds because the interest rate is, what is it, you know?
I'm not.
But it's like, but you know what I'm saying? There's so much in this, but this is just to put it on the ballot. No, we're not taking seven million. It's there if we need it, if we need it.
Okay.
We don't even have to use it.
And Frank's water question, Frank one point oh, Frank's water question, uh, uh, about the, uh, the well is, uh, we're, we're taking that up and addressing that further and exploring that as a way to-
Bring one at CMA.
Yeah.
So it's won't be groundwater, anything that's supply water.
Exactly. Okay, so now I understand.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Everybody's all.
I don't have seven million, but I'm just trying to understand. We're not borrowing, we're just a bond issue.
Okay, so this is, uh, an ordinance to create a bond election, uh, to pick this up for, uh, vote, and whether we're gonna pursue this further or not. That's the simplicity of it.
Yes, yes, that's initial breakdown.
Okay, so, uh, I make a motion. I make a motion to approve.
You made a, uh, motion to approve?
I make a motion to, uh-
Approve bill number ten eighteen.
Do we have to do the second, third reading stuff after I do that?
Yeah, well, what you can do by heading only if you want to, the first one, or you can do both.
Okay, uh, I make, uh, well, we voted on the first one already, ten seventeen.
Yes.
So it's just this one. So I make a motion, sorry for the, uh, dialogue. Uh, I make a motion to approve bill number ten eighteen, an ordinance calling a bond election in the city of Saint Mary and authorizing certain actions in connection therewith. By heading only.
By heading only, so the motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion made, second. All favor. Any opposed? All right, eyes have it. All right. Now, if you want me to, we can do that in only or break it down to a, or I can read it and you can do whatever you want to do, whatever response is this, as a roll call vote. You can do it by heading only, which would be tremendously faster.
I was, I've read it already once.
Yeah.
So now, by heading only makes sense.
Yeah. So. All right.
Yeah.
You have a motion?
I have a motion.
No, any? All right, motion is made by heading only for ordinance. Our bill number ten eighteen, ordinance calling for bond election in the city of Saint Mary, Missouri, authorizing certain actions in connection therewith. Uh, roll call vote. Alderman, doc, or Zenduda.
Aye.
Alderman, Kathy Bergman.
Aye.
Alderman, Rose Rosenway.
Aye.
All right, eyes have it. That resolution has passed for bond to be put on the ballot. All right, departmental reports, emergency management, pretty much, I've been general FEMA, others, you know, things like that, nothing. Um, still, do you have any on your end that might change?
No.
All right. Um, yeah, so police department, doc, how's police department?
Oh, better than ever.
All right, better than ever, I would bet. Street department, doc, how's it going streets?
Well, uh, we're doing a lot of work in that area because, uh, the, well, first of all, Frankie repaired the ditch crack cut out on-
Water leak on H Street.
They reed that out.
Uh, so that's tidied up and stabilized. We've got barricades up on Third Street, which we were advised to do from FEMA because of concern about instability in the road. Not everybody was happy about it, but it's done. And we'll proceed further now with Jokers and otherwise to really fix the problem. And, uh, it's gonna be a significant road improvement. The bridge is being an issue. I can't tell you how much airtime we've used on how it's patched and what is used to patch it, and how low it is and how high it is. And the core engineers were out during the flood trying to deal with that. So, uh, I'm happy to hear that we're trying to do something about it. I think it's gonna be for the long term benefit of the city, and then hopefully it'll extend, propagate into the other areas as well. Frank, did you have any road, street?
Uh, there's a couple of potholes we need to fill over, which, I mean, they're real big, they, you need to try to dig, we need to fill there for the sequel.
And, uh, what, speaking of which, I mean, I saw some potholes that were filled and then unsealed, you know, like, close to the market for the bridge. So this Joker's saying, what is this, is like, is it imminent? Is it going down?
There are immobilizers sending equipment down to our plant, and they're gonna be putting equipment, right, in areas. And by then they're out, he'll let me know exactly how he's phasing it.
Yeah. And are we integrating with MoDoc with, uh, the culverts and stuff on the bend as well?
I'm still working on that. I digged the permit for the one resident that needed it through his tire hobby. Uh, I just got put it in, or half Jokers put it in, but he will have to on his own apply for a permit. This is a temporary.
Permit from the city or permit from the state?
From MoDoc from the state.
Okay.
But-
Is that a big deal?
Not really. I mean, I, I know the annual, well, I mean, came up and, I got all permits ready, so for all Jokers, I got that to take care of, so. And that culvert on third is gonna be replaced by MoDoc, so that's what it costs.
Great.
Um, other than that, yeah, I don't have anything else. Um, waste water, Frank, how we doing?
Um, doing all right. Oh, boy. Um, no, I think Ben looking pretty normal down there. Uh, we were kind of high on our DO, uh, it finally fell back out. Uh, I think, uh, the bugs are starting to work the pleading a little bit, so, uh-
The bugs are all pleading or the DO's deep pleading?
The DO's.
Okay.
Going down to where we need it normal at. I mean, uh, you know, basis is one, one, and it can go up a little hard, but a lot of times they don't like it too high, so wait and wait because it's just, if you, the more oxygen you have, the more bacteria can grow, and that's what can keep you from doing, it has that bacteria, so.
So a low DO level is better?
Oh, well, don't wanna get too low.
Yeah.
You go below one, you just kill it hopefully, you know, in, in theory. It, it don't really happen that way, but in theory, it is basically kill your plant and start a drought and so.
Oh. Oh.
Our, my goal is to keep it above one and no higher than five. So it's just, I know we've been a little higher than that, but I don't wanna keep it increasing because that is a form of growing bacteria you don't wanna grow.
And, uh, in general, what, do we have an average level on it that we maintain? Was it like two and a half or three?
It's usually roughly around three, four.
Okay.
You know, close to five. I mean, you know, it just gives or takes, you know, how much air is getting applied to it. Um, the other thing is the bacteria enzymes that we had was meant to make the DO go higher. Um, but since the plant's functioning properly in perspective, um, you know, uh, went higher than what we used to be sitting at, so. Um, but now I think it's starting to balance out. I know last week, we were still, or week before, we still high. And then finally, I started switching things around, dropping levels down and stuff. And then finally, um, started to drop the DO down a little bit. Like this morning, or well, this afternoon, we was at, uh, four point nine one, which was not bad at all.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it's still up there, but it's gradually going down till, you know, hopefully lower, you know? Um, which happens earlier today when I checked it. I checked, it seemed probably a little bit lower because in the meantime, you're, that's gonna be your lowest DO, you know, uh, in highs in the morning to the clean zone.
Did, uh, did we, as a result of improving the balance of things, did we reduce the amount of sludge removal that we normally?
So anyways, I talked to another operator that I've been friends with for a long time. Um, we were talking about this situation we was having where we have sludge and then we don't have sludge. Which the bacteria is doing its job, what it's supposed to be doing, um, the enzymes that we was putting in. Um, so what he referred me to do is go ahead and start dumping. Because what you're doing is you're getting new sludge and new sludge is really active. And then you might have a little bit of old sludge behind it. So he was kinda like telling me, you know, hey, do this, do this. And that's what I started doing now, which the sludge content coming in ain't a whole lot, but there is some gonna be in to the digester when we dump. And then you can't water it back off within a couple of days, back over anyway. So everything's starting, looks like it's starting to balance out a little bit, but I'm still too soon to tell what it's actually doing. But the plants are inefficient. I mean, it's, it's, the, the bacteria, the enzymes that's in there is meant to eat sludge.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that's kind of going on. Nothing's going to the creek at all, you know, and everything's been clean. Um, the other thing is, we shut down the UV room. Uh, it, uh, ended, marched out end of October, October 31st was the last day, we shut down, uh, drained the, uh, drained the trough out and, you know, converted it back to the creek itself, you know, so.
Does that creek drain out to the bridge by the Indian Hill?
Yes.
Okay.
Miss Morrison, Saint Morrison tribute or whatever it is.
The devil's almost blown dry now, the creek.
Yeah.
The creek that is like.
Yeah. I mean, you don't have, I mean, you only got twenty-three, twenty-four thousand gallons, you know, a day you want through the system. So if we get, you know, a high elevation of rain or something, I and I happens, it's not too much higher than that, but it does happen occasionally. Um, but, I mean, that's probably not enough water to make it all, you know? It makes itself down the creek, but it's still real hard. Um, but other than that, had to change the belt out on the blower the other day. Um, it, uh, I heard the blower going, but nothing was coming out. So we had to change the belt on that. One belt was slipping, the other one, you know, couldn't turn to drive it, we couldn't drive it, so we put a new belt on it.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, but everything on that side doing good. The water side, I guess you wanna go to the water side too now?
Yeah.
Water side, um, so I know a couple of weeks ago, we was having issue, customers saying that their water, uh, was smelling like sulfur and then had white milkiness in it. The issue with the sulfur smell is gonna be a hot water heater, it's gonna be a handle rod that's going bad and it causes the calcium in the water. If you don't drain your hot water heaters yearly, that's what's gonna cause that issue. Um, the other thing, the white milkiness that we were seeing, it was some air in the line. Uh, with the temperatures going from extreme, dropping out like it did, basically, you know, it's like hotter, you know? So anyways, we did get some air pockets in the elevated areas, you know, uh, where it's going over hill or whatever, so we got that all flushed out. Um, the other thing is, is last week, uh, last Thursday again, we had an issue with, um, customers was complaining again, went out flush hydrants. Um, you know, uh, basically it was, uh, they were saying that something was wrong with the water. So, uh, Friday morning, uh, I contacted DNR, um, around nine thirty, uh, Friday morning, uh, to inform, uh, Mr. Wyatt, uh, down there that's on the water side, uh, what was going on. He was, uh, referring to me, what could be happening on our side, you know, not our side, but with the customers, um, having the white milky whenever they put soap in the water and stuff. It could be just a reaction, you know, with cheap soap, uh, doing that. Um, if they got softeners, it could be, um, uh, with the, you know, uh, softening of waters, being softened too much. And adding, you know, chemical into it, it could cause it to do weird looking colors in the water. Um, so what we did is I, uh, recommended to Mike Wyatt about, hey, you know, I gotta take my back tea sample for the month, or if I take a special in that area. So we took a special yesterday and the back tea sample sent off, so we'll see where that's at. Um, special, uh, if it comes back, uh, hopefully it comes back good. I mean, I, I, I try to hope they come back good, but, um, if it comes back, E coal, well, hopefully not E coal, but if it comes back chloroform present, which any degree it's in the water, sometimes you do that. Um, but if it did come back, we would just put out a cautionary groundwater advisory, retest with samples again, special samples again, and see what, if there was a fluke, you know, if something was in the water and it came back out. Um, so anyways, uh, uh, them don't count against us, specials don't count against us. It's a regular routine that counts against us.
But, uh, water, that would be an individual home if it was a water heater flushing issue, wouldn't happen to numerous people on, on the line, right? It would be.
So there were numerous people on the same line, it was throughout the town, there were a couple here, a couple there, you know, they were talking, um, uh, the Philly station was talking about it, you know, having a problem. Um, which, you know, uh, DNR respective, you know, they don't go by taste, they don't go by smell. They go by if it's coordinated, then it's just bad, good backteas or bad backteas. That's what they go by. Uh, I know whenever we had the well before, we had ten water, you know? You fill your cup up, you had ten water. Uh, so, I mean, it was still drinkable, but you're just hitting your daily iron, you know, whenever we had, you know, well systems. Um, so, I mean, it, it's just one of the things, you know, uh, you know, we keeping a eye on the water and stuff. You know, I gave him the chlorine readings and stuff that we've been getting, uh, and stuff, and he said they're awesome, you know, the chlorine. Um, basically, what this side of town to that side of town is, you know, referencing. He said that, you know, we're keeping it pretty stable and nothing really is in this, in the line eating up the chlorine too bad, so. Um, so anyways, but, uh, you know, uh, you know, they said, form DNR was going on, if they needed anything, you know, respective coming down here, uh, to, you know, uh, if there was a problem, you know? But I was just blowing that horn first before residents started blowing the horn at DNR, you know, about the situation. Uh, 'cause, you know, it got brought to my attention, so bring it to their attention. So anyway, if somebody did contact DNR, maybe RIA, okay, we're gonna talk to the operator, try to do everything possible, so. Um, but other than that, everything's been, you know, good on the court. Uh, Adam contacted Buck Heights and we got a whole pallet full of chlorine, or bleach chlorine. Um, a whole pallet, uh, which was cheaper than what we was doing. Uh, it's the same amount, except five percent, so.
In bottles or bags?
Yeah, it's bottled.
Okay.
We can't really go fifty-five gallon drills, we ain't got the equipment to move it around. Um, I mean, yeah, we got a tractor, we can put it on there, but.
Too hazardous.
Yeah, you know, uh, issue. But anyways, uh, I know we got that, bleach has been, the pump we got up there, that new one that we got a couple of months ago, a few months ago, uh, it's been doing really good. Uh, haven't really had, you know, uh, no airs of it. Um, so anyways, uh, the water usage, we've been pretty fortunate. Uh, we've actually spent pretty low. Um, I, uh, you know, used to, you'd turn the water on up here at the tower and if you let it run for a certain period of time, they'd kick the tower on. So I try to be a little bit quicker now to, in a way, to just drop the tower out to its normal state instead of trying to fill it back up. And we're doing, I just wanted to see what our water usage was. And I know one day if we were out and we only had two hundred ninety gallons go through the meter, and, yeah, we thought the engine broke, but no, it, I don't think. So anyways, but, uh, yeah, I mean, it's been going, going pretty fortunate. I mean, we haven't had really no big issues, not one. Um, the other thing is, with grinders, uh, the new grinders that we got put in, uh, the E ones, uh, I went around, you know, installed one in lots. I got twenty-six of them done, I got five more to do. Um, and then, um, uh, we did have an issue with the grinder of the, uh, apartments, uh, out front. Um, uh, they waited pumping down, give it a float, had a bunch of grease on it. Anyways, I'm, uh, guy caked off and it was working good, so. And that's all I had on that one.
And you know how much we, when I flushed, how much did I use?
I used about five thousand gallons.
How many?
Forty-five thousand.
Oh, she's saying I used forty-five thousand gallons.
Are you gonna pay for them?
I don't know. I paid today, it was great.
Being, and I can't account for how much you actually flushed, I mean.
That's about five hundred.
It's five hundred and then, but it's.
Sample, I had a full.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, you know, that's just an average, so.
I'm just thinking of the tower dropped, I took the alarm off, because I was.
Well, that's because you opened up the line and it dropped the pressure gauge, it didn't drop the tower itself. I had to hear it put the alarm on, made me come flying all the way from work after I was getting off.
That is. Don't drink that with cancer, it's not good.
Hey, it's a big one.
There, other than that, yeah, but the police, well, police were saving a dollar a gallon now compared to where we're.
That's great. How much do you normally use in a month, how many gallons?
Uh.
It's normally pretty low, close to fifty-five gallons.
Yeah.
Very low one. And anyways, give or take. I mean, I'm, uh, this new Walkman pump, it's, it's, it's a little bit less probably than what we do with the Ellen pump. Um, uh, but, I mean, basically it's gonna be where we're sitting at on the chlorine, if I need to adjust the rate of, to put it out to the outside town. Recently, past couple of weeks here, we've been doing good, sitting on the one setting and, and just, so.
Cool.
All right. Good, Frankie? All right, yeah. All right. Park and Cemetery, um, Rose?
We did get signs put up at the cemetery for.
I'm sorry?
We did get put signs up there for the gates.
You did? Yeah, I got one and I'm still waiting on the other because they're like custom, because it says dust has gone and I, I, they don't work for that kind of style gate. You don't wanna put like, I didn't wanna look tacky, you know what I'm saying? So I got one, which can be tied, you know, or mounted, or I don't know how, if you wanted it. Cause I know the Catholic site has that little root thing that's falling apart, it's making me sad.
And we also got, um, trash barrels up there.
Yeah. Just like I said.
Yes.
So, is there any, Damon, is there any, um, trees falling? Or anything like that?
No.
I don't know. We got a bad one up there, but it's gonna take contractor to get to it though, because it, it, it's pretty bad. So I, I mean, well, some of them wants to climb, but I don't feel like climbing that one.
No.
But it's so brittle. I mean, it's dead, so, but it's good wood, but. I can show you. It's, it's a massive, so.
A tree?
Yeah. It's already taken out like two tombstones.
Oh, speaking of trees, there's that stump, uh, this, uh, not to. It's not, it's not a purpose of this. There's a stump in this bio ground or whatever, the corner, kind of in front of your house, a little bit to the right, it's jagged. If, we could burn that down or cut. It's wherever that tree went down from the tornado and the usual jagged stump is still.
A stump?
I don't know where on the tree it is, it's a stump.
Okay.
It's right in that field. So it, it's drying and cracked and by now, they were gonna cut it down and burn it out. It looks better.
You're talking, you're talking about in the corner down there?
Yeah.
That cottonwood tree. Uh, we couldn't cut it off, it had a piece of ceiling.
Oh.
They were trying to burn it.
But maybe like, uh, I forgot what kind of, you can, what is it, jet furnace or something, where you drill a hole this way and drill a hole this way? And, uh, you start a little fire, it'll burn itself off and inside out.
Right, right, yeah.
Is that like FEMA property or is it city property?
I just don't have an answer.
That would be city over there.
If it was FEMA, then I guess you could be reimbursed for.
Yeah.
Any of that.
I mean, it's in FEMA, I guess buyout, if you wanna consider buyout, is it AV zone? Cause you don't have zone, so.
You could turn it, sorry, the term is rocket stove. You can turn it into a rocket stove with some, strategically place holes and.
But Frankie is right, yeah. The other one, I don't know what you wanna do, is stand a little bar stool there, if you wanna leave it, if it's a forever, towards forever.
Well, that's just when I'm driving it, you know, it's pointed, it sticks up, so I guess that's.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'll have to look, maybe the floods on like Frankie said, and we can get reimbursed for that, I'm thinking, so. All right. Anything else in the park, really? Uh, now, uh, like I said, there's forty, approximately forty-one thousand allocated, so I don't know if you guys wanna like call Fisher Price or park people. I don't know who fills parks, I tell, I look around.
I just got an email today from somebody that owns parks, I don't know where it came from, but I'm sure that was me.
He's supposed to be giving me a letter too, so we can relocate it, so.
Some cities and park districts have, I don't know where we could do it, we discussed that helicopter landing zone out there, but they, uh, they, along like running trails and stuff like that, or in parks. But if you have a, a circle that you would walk, for example, then every, you know, like thirty yards or forty yards, then you go, put like a chin up bar and then another, you'd have like a, do a sit up bar or, and then a block where you do step ups on it or something. So if someone wanted to have a workout, you know, and walk, uh.
Case down there.
You could do.
Saint Jennifer has one.
Oh, yeah, you too.
Yeah, they actually, yeah, down that St. Louis Road to the gym and stuff like that, so maybe, I mean, you'd have to have people that wanna use, use it. But, uh, if it's there, maybe people use it, so.
So I don't know, Kathy, if you guys wanna like help creativity wise, what do you think? I mean, there's so many options, it's tough.
Oh, I, what, what I was thinking is that area close to your mom and dad's, you know, that square thing, which is, I guess, like they're saying, it's.
The public square.
The plaza or the public square, we're talking, you know, down, it's about on the hill.
It's a schoolyard.
It's a schoolyard.
Yeah, if, uh, if we, it's so beautifully mowed all the time, it would, that would be nice to make like a walking square. Or because it's right down the middle, you know, it's, it's right down the middle where you can see each other. You can do some walking, you can along the edge of it on that, uh, in that hillside, put a chin up bar or something like that. And, uh, make that, you know, a designated area, especially if we're, like, one of the, I don't know if this is not results thing, but there's, uh, a discussion about using some of the area around the park for a lagoon for wastewater treatment plants down the road. And making it, you know, more of a passage instead of an active thing that needed required, need, well, required maintenance for a lagoon assembly. For the lagoon sample, I said, I guess that was just about the, I think, number here.
That was one, one per size.
So if that happens, then uh, then we could have like another park area, you know, and uh, of some kind. You just have to decide what's gonna be in the park, you know, if it's, we're not gonna have a soccer field or anything like that. Uh, because right now, we probably don't have, unless we host events, we don't, that could be a soccer field down there. Cause it's flat as a pancake and you have good parking nearby, reasonably good parking nearby. Uh, and uh, we can develop that, you know, a little bit now, I don't know what to say.
And I, I get it, and yet one concern I do have about that is with the way the garage is set up, that driveway runs through there to go to the garage.
Yeah, yeah.
So that would be a concern and, you know, whether we rented that out, whether we sold it, you know, or what we did with it. That would be a concern and that's looked at too.
Yeah.
I just tossed me.
Right, right, I get it.
Yeah, I'm just.
It hasn't flooded for a very long, I'm scared.
That last big flood, the water went up to Third Street, goes down the hill and it went, cause I took, put my John boat in it over there. It went right up, it was a perfect place to put a, uh, to launch a boat from, because there wasn't a current in there. The water was high and it was.
He's kind of, I guess, I got sucked in the current, I had a rope, but.
But that, could we use that money to purchase another piece of land for?
Yeah, I mean, you have.
We wouldn't have to buy it.
We wanna do that, we could possibly not do that, if we have our own property to do it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to think, is there's so much allocation, like charitable care and that. And you know, Fisher Price has like programs and like different ones for like, and you can un, like even if it wasn't that zone, the flood, if you can unbolt it.
Or, yeah, whatever we get over there, if we make it so that it's easy to reuse, if we have to move it or something like that, that will not spend it twice.
Yeah, you know, cause they have one for like spectrum, so you know, except for all kids, you know, I was like, oh my gosh.
Yeah, we could probably, let me interrupt, we could probably ask for sponsorship from some businesses that we do business with, you know, like a tractor company or something, or whatever we get our oil or.
Yeah, and Will, Will Tykes does sponsorships too for towns.
Yeah.
I don't know much about, I'm trying to get into, but I tried to, I tried to build mine and turn it to a castle. I mean, that stuff everywhere, it's size, I need to make anything, you don't wanna go for ISO. I tried to get a free one too, me and Kathy get three free ones, we tried to get them and they go like that, I mean, so. But yeah, soon as we get the letter, I'm just waiting on a letter, says we can, you know, put whatever, but I'd, up at top, it'd be Mr. Fisher. You know, or boys, to the boys on that, but I wish, they're not gonna do anything with it, so. But I don't know if that's an adequate area or not.
It'd be a good truck stop parking area.
Yeah, terrible when they wrote it. All right, all right, anybody got anything else that, did anybody have anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, Frank?
Um, it's been a while, maybe a year or plus, I don't know, if someone would have mentioned putting in a Dollar General.
Mm-hmm.
In St. Mary's and I'm unfamiliar with who the person was and if the person wanted to do a franchise type thing. Or bring in company owned, I don't know. But there are things that I think would serve a better purpose, where they would make more money. And there's Dollar Generals all over St. Jen, you know, Bloomsdale and St. Jen City and County and. And then of course Perryville, what would attract them to come here, to go to that Dollar General versus the others? And it would be people in St. Mary's going there instead of people from nearby places that already have one. So uh, something that would be more profitable would be like, uh, something that isn't around in St. Jen or Perryville, like. And IHOP or a Denny's, something that they don't offer, but if we offered it, that would attract people. Put this on the map, I know originally when I put up saintverymo.com, it's like, all we have is the antique mall. That's all I know us for is the antique mall and now we don't have the antique mall, bro.
Yeah, that's a, I remember, and speak by you, you know, former alderman Helms, uh, set up restaurants around the country. And so he got hired to size up an area to see if it's profitable enough to put up a brand, you know, franchise restaurant or a business of some kind, and it was in the, you know, food catering industry.
The big deal in St. Jen, I think he started that.
I'm talking about restaurants, yeah, like I, you know, like a Denny's, that's not dependent on us, that's dependent on them. Denny's or IHOP is gonna scout an area to put one of, because they wanna make the most money possible. Where are they gonna put it? At a high traffic area, you know.
Is that gonna go for a franchise versus company owned?
Well, regardless, anyone who's gonna make a financial decision like that wants to make a profitable one. So their greatest chance of profit is high traffic area. Number two, which is also a corollary of the high traffic area, is another successful business there, you know, like an anchor of some kind. So if you have McDonald's, you know, gas station, then there's maybe Taco Bell nearby, you know. And there used to be wherever there was McDonald's, you'd find a Burger King nearby. So if you look at the interchange in Perryville, you got a McDonald's at one kitty corner, you got a Burger King. And across from McDonald's, you got a Taco Bell, and then you got a gas station at the other, and then you got a subway around there. So they're all.
Clustered.
Yeah, they're in, they're dependent on each other, whether it's an agreed on or an understood thing, they just gravitate towards each other with it. So our, you know, like, we had an antique mall, so if you notice, what happened when we had an antique mall, is that other people tried to open up antique mall here. Schultze's did it, even in that church that I own, whoever was in there wrote, when I first got it, on the wall, there was like a one and a two and a three just written on the drywall, I thought it was like a stations of the cross thing, because it was a church. But when it was, was someone wanted antique, mini antique mall in the church and probably under that, it was gonna be booth one and they'd have tables underneath there and people would set it up, but it failed. Why? Cause the steps were bad and there's no parking there and, you know, all these other business decisions. And it, you know, could have worked, maybe, but I, you know, I, it's the same, the premise is the same. One antique place draws another one nearby, and then another one, and they, and then all of a sudden some other thing pops up that's similar in some like thrift shop or, you know, whatever that could be. Cause people going there are wanting to buy old stuff, so other people who sell old stuff are gonna gravitate towards the area. So you're kind of right, uh, in that it's.
We were trying to have.
Yeah, absolutely.
That isn't around anywhere else.
And I think we are, from my understanding, is that we are gonna have a Dollar General, we're already researching stuff about that.
How long ago was that? I mean, it's.
Not that long, it works, no, this is.
We were, I can talk, we were in talks with them first, but we had no property, but it is in talks with an engineer, that's where, make sure they don't conflict. With every engineer, it's doing a water study, so, um, I'm not gonna disclose that specific whoever has it. Because that's their job and duty to do, but there is talks, and as long as it goes the way it's going, it'll be, takes three months of phone approval to build one household. Three months to build one and it'll be up on an order part by the post office, if everybody goes as planned, so. But I'm not gonna, I can't speak for, um, that clan or group of people, so.
Okay, I just, we, we give them a lot to attract.
No, it's a good, I don't know, I'll interrupt you a little bit, it's, it's a good point, because, you know, uh, you spend a lot of time dealing with problems. You know, like this is breaking, that's breaking, and now, so it's all, you spend a lot of time in a, in a mental operating basis where you're coping all the time. Well, we've made some successes, you know, we're, we're still doing coping stuff, we paid this bill for a thousand dollars or whatever that came up today. But I think we can start turning attention to more creative things now, which gets you into future planning. And uh, so any suggestions that you have are welcome, if you're not in a meeting and you wanna just send just a, a letter or something like with some ideas and troubleshoot, and we'll uh, put our heads together and see what we can do with it.
No use car lots. We've been through that, or at least with newer cars.
It's kind of like that truck parking, you know, B and B, it'll help hopefully baiters in the long run, you know, as long as you have you there. So I mean, it's all about starting somewhere, you never know, and it's passive income. But I, I see what you're saying, and I do agree with you, but it's so hard when you got people that have, we have so much FEMA land. And they go out for pennies on the dollar, you know, and it's sad, cause some of that's good, I mean.
Some people think trailer parks, but then you look at Grease Hill, which.
That's right, I mean.
Has turned into a dump.
Yeah, that's not very good.
And we end up with something like that after a age, and not looking for that, but.
Cause I agree with that, if you got ideas, just shoot them away or just, or meet our guests, whatever, anybody, so.
Do we have any other items on the?
No, on this agenda, I just wanted to, to adjourn to.
We're not going to the closing.
So make a minute motion to adjourn to the scene.
All right, is there a second?
Yes, I have something.
All pairs.
Hi.
Hi.
They vote.
And we did it in two hours.